Welcome, everyone. Hope you all had a wonderful Thanksgiving. Welcome to our first meeting in December. We'll get started with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Constitution stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Just a reminder to everyone to silence their cell phones. Mine is silenced. Meeting documents are available for review down next to Commissioner Heiburger. And Carol is here this morning if you need a listening device. That takes us to routine business. I'd consider a motion to approve the agenda.
Motion to approve?
Second.
Motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Next item is to approve the meeting minutes from November 26, 2019. First, we'll approve the Minnehaha County Commission minutes.
Move for approval.
Second.
Motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Next item is the joint Minnehaha County and City of Sioux Falls minutes.
Move approval. Second.
Motion and second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Next item, are bills to be paid in the amount of $296,558.95.
Motion to pay the bills?
Second.
Motion and a second. Any comments? All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Next item for your review are reports from the Minnehaha County Regional General Detention Center. The report for October 2019, there's lots of great information in there, so I recommend that for your review. Next item are personnel actions. I'd consider a motion to approve the routine personnel actions.
Motion to approve?
Second.
Motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Good morning, Carrie.
Good morning, Carrie Dever from Human Resources. I have three special personnel action requests for you today. The first is to recognize the following significant employee anniversaries for December. Short list, but we have John Hagan, who's a CO in the jail and has been there for five years. Mary Yu, who's the Administrative Secretary for the Sheriff's Office, celebrating 15 years of service. And Ray Coens, who's our Medical Coordinator in Human Services with 20 years of service. I don't think we have any of them with us this morning, but our thanks and gratitude to them for their service.
Absolutely. Thank you.
The second item I have for you is to record volunteers for the county for November of 2019. Slightly shorter list than in the past few months, but still 270 volunteers for the county serving in November.
Once again, we always approve or appreciate all of that service. It's always an amazing list when we get to see that every month, so thank you.
It is. The last item I have for you for special personnel actions is to accept the resignation of Aaron McGowan, State's Attorney, effective December 6th, and to approve an agreement regarding his resignation. And it's my understanding you have a copy of the agreement in front of you.
Thank you.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any questions, comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Thank you.
The next item I have for you is, every year we talk about elected department head salaries for the upcoming year. We do need to pass a resolution likely next week setting the salaries for those individuals for 2020. I've attached for you to the briefing memo some of the documents that you looked at during the budget hearings about market-based pay for them, what our comparable entities are paying, what your other department heads are earning, as well as what the Assistant Department Head level position in each of those departments are earning as well. So today, what I'm hoping we can do is have some conversation about what you think might be appropriate wages for those individuals for the upcoming year.
So she's looking for some discussion. Any ideas, comments? Go ahead and kick it off if ever, Commissioner Benega.
Well, I would start, excuse me, my, excuse me again, but raising the incomes of those individuals by the cost of living increase that we discussed for our total budget hearings. And that would apply to those that have positive reviews. If they didn't, I think we would freeze those at last year's salary.
So, I mean, kind of along those lines, I mean, I think just to be a little more clear, because we don't actually do official reviews of elected officials. My recommendation would be that, that we leave the Treasurer's Office at their current level. That's, we've had a number of issues that we've addressed with the Treasurer's Office this year. Since we just accepted the resignation of the State's Attorney, I think we need to set the level of that position somewhere where we can reasonably attract a new person with the idea that we might have some flexibility in the future as we actually fill that position and recognizing that there'll be election, an election next year. I would suggest starting at $130,000 for that position, given it will be somebody that won't have, you know, likely experience in running a State's Attorney's Office. Then I would suggest 2% for the auditor, 4% for the Register of Deeds. And finally, I would, I would advocate and recommend 6% for the sheriff. You know, looking at the, the, all the information that was provided by Carrie Dever, given the large staff size that the sheriff manages, his 22 years of experience as a department head, and, you know, recognizing the fact that last year when we needed some assistance with managing the emergency management department, he was willing to take that on along with all of his other responsibilities in managing a 24/7 staff. I think that that is a reasonable range, a raise, and puts him within the range of comparable sheriffs given the size of our county. So that's, that's where I kind of came out when I was looking at this. Commissioner Karski.
I'll agree on the Treasurer at zero. And looking at the State's Attorney's Office, when we talk about, you know, there's 58 people in that staff that are under the State's Attorney. And the Chief Deputy would be still, or by placing the State, State's Attorney at 130, we're still about 4% above the person that they immediately supervise. So that makes sense. I'm okay with 130 there. Register of Deeds at four, I'm, I'm good with that one. The sheriff, I was thinking five, you're thinking six. It can go either way there. The auditor, Bob has done a great job for us here. You know, he's worked on, in the last few years with me on the Financial Action Network and the Facilities Task Force. We leaned heavily on him for information there. I'm good with two.
Commissioner Heiburger.
I think I'm probably about the same spot as, as both of you are also. On the State's Attorney's Office, just a question of clarification, is that something we set as we move forward? And this is just a, and this is just our starting point?
This is amount, as I understand state statute, that we need to set going into an election year before January 1st. So this would be the amount of pay, at least at the base salary for that. I think there might be some discretion for looking at that. But yeah, I think instead of, in the past, we've sort of set that base salary for newly elected officials, roughly around pay grade 26 for the State's Attorney in the Sheriff's Office. The way I'm reading the statute, I think you need to look more at a realistic number for attracting a qualified candidate to run.
Thank you, Carrie, for the clarification. I appreciate that. Other than that, I think that I'm probably okay, and I'm, I'm the same with the sheriff, a 5% or 6% raise. I definitely understand the 6%, and so I'm fine with either of them. And then just another point of clarification, do we discuss the commission increase at the end of the year? Or is that today?
That would be the first meeting in 2020. That we'll discuss that one.
I think that's the end of my questions. Thank you.
Any other comments, questions?
I still like tying it to the cost of living percentage that we deal with as a county. I think we need something that's measurable and frankly, when life isn't as good, we can use that number. And when it's better, we can also increase it by that. I don't really agree totally with the concept of, of making just a flat fee across the board kind of thing and changing it a little bit for a couple people and a lot for someone else. But I do know the sheriff has done an extremely admirable job, so I, I would be flexible with that, for sure. When we get a bad audit report like we got this year, I think that's the way it needs to be also.
Okay. So are you, Carrie's looking to bring a proposal for next week, so we kind of need to give her some direction?
Some guidance, whatever the number needs to be, is evenly divisible by 27 pay period. So if you can give me in a sense for what percentage, I'll take and round that to the nearest number that's evenly divisible by 27 and include that in the resolution for next week. Commissioner Karski, I'm sorry.
So Commissioner Benega, are you talking 3.8% is, because I think that's the number that, no, that's not the number.
That's not the right number.
The number for, that you were given to grow your budget was 2.4%, I believe. There's 3.8% in the budget because of the 27th pay period. Just a couple points of clarification, and I should have covered some of this initially too. It's just, as you look at that market data, just remember that those are comparisons to 2019 pay rates. We didn't know when we're gathering this. Other county entities are going through the same process that we are. So we don't really know where they're setting their rates for 2020. So I encourage you to consider that as you look at it. We don't want to continue to lag behind those, that market data. We really want to be competitive.
Hi, Commissioner.
Clarifications, Commissioner Benega. What are you thinking about the auditor, then? Were you thinking zero because of the, because I'm anywhere from zero to two?
I think when we get the kind of report that we got, I think we need to be sensitive to that and we need to recognize the fact that it was not a clean audit and that's the way it needs to be recorded for financial reasons.
Commissioner Heiburger.
Need a motion on this or just direction?
I believe just direction, and then we'll need approval of the resolution next week.
Anything else? I mean, I think we've given some direction, so this week, if you have further direction for Carrie, we could, we could give that to her, but, I mean, so I think right now we're at somewhere between 0% and 2% for the auditor. Any strong feelings on that? We can give Carrie, Commissioner Karski.
You know, the state audit report, I think, is what you're referring to. But didn't most of that fall back on the Treasurer's Office more so than the auditor's office?
You're right, it did. And I was going to talk a little bit more about that at some point. I think it's a partnership in some ways and in some, some organizations, I think you see those two as equal. Unfortunately, I don't know that it's probably totally fair to the auditor when the, most of the problem was with the Treasurer, and the auditor did recognize those problems and brought them to us. So I could be swayed on that one.
Swayed.
I get a little concerned when we start talking about dividing it equally over the 26 or the 27 payroll periods, because I think next year we're going to start accruing for payroll for unpaid days at the end of the year, so it's going to equal itself out at some point.
I know that we're looking at it. The reason we do this for the elected department heads, the state statute says that they have to receive a certain amount within the year. So regardless of the pay periods, I mean, for our elected officials, honestly, this upcoming year, they likely will see smaller checks because we're meeting those state statute guidelines of ensuring they receive that salary over an annualized basis.
I guess my gut feeling is if we're going to do 1% for the Treasurer, the auditor shouldn't suffer, but...
I think right now we're at zero for the Treasurer, so...
Oh, you're right. I got the wrong column. There's no question that that's probably fair, the zero.
Okay. So we are zero for the Treasurer. Are you okay with 2% for the auditor?
Yes, I am.
Okay. 4% for the Register of Deeds?
Since I lost the 2.4 issue, I might just as well be flexible, right?
We'd all appreciate that. Okay, and are we okay with 6% for the sheriff? Okay, all right.
That does, thank you.
Perfect. Thank you so much. Okay, so that takes us to item six, which are abatements. So Chris, I understand that we, you are recommending for approval, abatements on parcel 48401, veteran exempt for 2016 property tax and the amount of $129.23. Same, so we have three on parcel 48401 for 2016, 2017, and 2018 property taxes. And parcel 58489 is also a veteran's exemption for 2018 property taxes and the amount of $308.16.
Correct. Chris Lilla, Equalization Office. Yes, I'm recommending approval on all of these, these four abatements, two parcels. There's no issues. These are veterans that were rated permanently and totally disabled. And again, by codified law, if they would have qualified but missed an application deadline, then they're eligible to receive these. So these have been calculated, and I'm recommending these going forward. We will have one more for each of these, but it'll be for the 2019 pay 20. We're not able to process those abatements yet because those taxes haven't been calculated yet. So there'll be one more year sometime following, in the next year, once taxes are collected, we'll get those abatements ran through. But yes, these are recommended. No issues with any of these.
Move approval.
Motion and a second. Roll call vote, please.
Aye.
Barth?
Aye.
Benega?
Aye.
Heiburger?
Aye.
Bender?
Aye. Motion passes unanimously. Thank you so much. Next item, notices and requests, there are none. Next item are planning and zoning notices. It's the first reading and authorize the auditor to publish notice of public hearing on January 7th, 2020 for rezon 1908. David Heinold, good morning.
Good morning, County Commission, David Heinold, Planner 2, County Planning Department. So this is the first reading for rezoning 19-08. It, the property is actually located at 48127, South Dakota Highway, or State Highway 42. It is about three and a half miles east of Sioux Falls. And skip forward, the, the property is about nine and a quarter acres. It is to rezone from the A1 Agricultural District to the I-1 Light Industrial District. And the petitioner has included a site photo of the area. So you can kind of see some of the existing land uses in the area. There's Merlin Roy's gravel pit to the southeast, and then you have some existing industrial property to the north along the highway. And then to the west of that, you've got a rubble dump to the west. And the property right now is being used for agricultural, and it does have a house on it, and it took a picture of the site. There is an existing house. You can see it's kind of colored light pink there. And then you can see some agricultural buildings. There's a silo, there's a barn. And the rest of the property is used for animal storage. The, this item has been before the Planning Commission, and the Planning Commission voted six to zero with Commissioner Odie recusing himself for, or abstaining from the vote to recommend approval of rezoning 1908. The documents that have been included for you, for your review, including the minutes from the November 25th meeting. And action should be taken to, to set the hearing date for January 7th, 2020 because of the holidays. Skip forward a couple meetings, so, and that meeting will be at 9:00 AM, at or after 9:00 AM. So I'd take any questions if you have them. If not, then, thank you.
Commissioner Karski.
If not today, when we get the second reading, what type of conditional uses would be permitted or required, I guess, on an industrial zoning like this?
So with I-1 Light Industrial, you include all of the conditional uses with the commercial district. So you include things like mini-storage with outdoor storage areas, and like contractor shops, storage, warehousing, or not warehousing, because indoor warehousing would be just a permitted use. Some of the permitted uses would be like office space and other like, like repair services type things, like limited retail. And then you'd get into some of the other items like that.
So the neighbors would have the opportunity, under a lot of circumstances, to weigh in on the uses of this property for certain...
For certain uses.
Applications, yeah. Okay, thank you.
Any other questions?
Take the motion to approve publication.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any further comments, questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Next item is item nine, petition for compromise of lien. There are none. This takes us to the opportunity for public comment. If there's someone here who'd like to speak about something that's not on the agenda, this is your opportunity.
Good morning, Commissioners. DJ Bhuthi, County Highway Superintendent. Just wanted to give a brief update on the winter weather that we've been having over the last four or five days. I didn't have an agenda item, and so doing it during public comment, if that's okay. Over the last four or five days, we've had a winter weather event, and it's been particularly interesting. So I just figured I'd give a public comment and give a brief update to the County Commission. We've had a lot of ice, a lot of complaints, I guess I could say, to the County Commission, or to the Highway Department, which is not normal. And we've had a lot of people calling in and just kind of giving their thoughts on what they felt that we felt, or what they've had for driving conditions to the, on the, on the roads. I'm sorry, I didn't really come, didn't really prepare very well for this. But on the, on the roads, we had a lot of ice, and we had a lot of people complaining that there was a lot of difficult driving conditions. We had the interstates closed west of town, and the roads on the county highways were pretty bad. And so our guys were out four or five hours on Thursday, Friday. On Saturday and Sunday, they were out six hours and eight hours, both of those days. And it was not good driving conditions, and so...
Question. Commissioner Heiburger?
DJ, so I, I think that the ice compo, and with the wind compounded the fact that not being able to put on the salt melt that we normally use, is, is that correct? And so that hampered some of the, and, and they were rough. I mean, I live in the country too, so I know what it was like, but I think that some of that was hampered by what we could put down because of the wind?
Yeah, and that, that was one of our biggest messages that we wanted to put out, and, and that's what I was going to get to. So normally, when we have bad weather conditions in the wintertime, we, we get out and we, we put down chemical, we, we plow the snow, and then we put down chemical. And so when people go out and they drive, they, they notice that there's bad weather, and, and they're able to still drive typically. With this weather condition that we had this, over this last weekend, we had a lot of rain that, that came first, and then we had a lot of wind. And so when there's a lot of wind, we can't put down as much chemical as we typically do. And the reason being is that when there's a lot of wind, we can't put down chemical because if you, if you put down the chemical and you melt the, the ice, you're going to have a lot of things that stick to the road. And, and that will create a worse condition than what's actually out there. And people don't really understand that. And so we couldn't put down any chemical, and, and there was icy conditions. And so it seems like we're not doing a whole lot, even though we are putting down our scraper blades, is what we call them, the underbody blades. And we're, we're trying to do the best that we can, but it doesn't look like we're doing a whole lot because our front plows often aren't down. Our, our scraper blades are down, trying to take care of the ice, but it doesn't look like we're doing a whole lot. And so when, when we do get the wind, when it's icy conditions, it's just difficult to see that we're doing something, and you don't see the impact. But this weekend was pretty difficult. And so on Monday, we went out, there was no wind on Monday, and we had higher temperatures. So we did put down a lot of chemical yesterday. And, and by the end of the day yesterday, it was pretty well taken care of. But it was, it was difficult to see over the weekend that we were doing a whole heck of a lot.
Commissioner Karski.
You know, Thanksgiving, four-day weekend, everybody wants to get to Grandma's house and, and, you know, all that fun stuff, and the weather being what it was made things difficult. You had your people out there on Thanksgiving Day working, and that's no fun either. But, you know, just to thank your, your department employees, and we're concerned about safety. The safety of your people, and if it's not, if the weather's not good enough for your people to be, be out driving around, taking care of the roads, it's probably not good enough for your people to go to Grandma's house either. So better to put it off for a day than to get hurt. And I don't think we had any significant accidents on county roads over the weekend, did we?
We, over the weekend, we didn't have any serious crashes where there were serious injuries on our county highway system. There were definitely many run-off-the-road crashes that were reported, not only on our county highway system, but on the state highways and the, and the interstate. Thankfully, none of them were serious injuries, to my knowledge. But like I stated before, there, there were a lot of crashes because of bad roads. We put out a, a weather update on our Facebook page, and I think within the first 24 hours, there were like 6,000 people that, that viewed that, which for our Facebook page, that's a lot of people. And, and so there were, the word was getting out, and I think that people were, were acknowledging that and, and adjusting their travel plans. But still, with it being a difficult weather and, and a holiday where people normally travel, it was, it was a bad combination. And so that, that, that's the reason why I wanted to give the update, just to make sure that the commission understood that, yes, we were out there, it didn't look like we were doing maybe a whole lot because, because of the ice, but we were trying our best. Our guys spent a lot of man-hours out there this weekend, and, and they were doing the best that they could.
Thank you.
Any go?
DJ, I understand your issues because frankly, we have a large parking lot that we deal with in two different locations, excuse me, and the individual who was working with us said this is the first time that they've ever plowed snow when they had literally rain, sleet, and snow all at the same time within just minutes. And frankly, they couldn't keep up, and by the time they got some of it done, they had to go back and redo it. So I understand your frustrations. All we can do is our best efforts, and I think we're all comfortable in knowing that you tried to do that, so thank you.
Commissioner Barth?
Thank you. You know, a lot of people have to work in this kind of weather, and it may be the highway workers, it may be the fire protection people, it may be law enforcement, it might be ambulance. I've got to say that I'm very grateful for the efforts of those that went to work when some of us stayed home and watched the fireplace. When I was younger, I did work as a service technician, going out, climbing poles. It was hard to dig holes in this weather, but I've actually dug out telephone boxes when the snow was above my head. But it's really rough to be out there, and your next warm location is, you never know. So thank you and your crews for being out there, and thank you for taking the complaint seriously. I think we all understand the burden of being out trying to keep things operating.
Yeah, we do appreciate you coming this morning and keeping us updated over the weekend. I mean, I know the Sheriff's Department has kind of adopted the "drive to arrive" slogan, and I think we all have responsibility to make sure that we're driving in accordance with the conditions. I do live out in the country as well, and there were quite a few cars in the ditch, and I could understand because it was really slick sometimes if you weren't really kind of paying attention. And there's, there's been a lot of changes in the topography where, out where I live, with some new development, which caused a lot of additional drifting, which in places I wasn't used to having drifting. And so we all have to bear our responsibility to drive safely and with a lot of awareness. And we really do appreciate your staff that are out at 4:00 in the morning trying to, to battle those elements. So thank you. Thanks for coming this morning.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else here for public comment this morning? All right, seeing nobody rushing the podium, we'll go to regular business. First item on regular business is a public hearing and second reading of an amendment to ordinance, MC 31-5-18, for licensing ambulance services in Minnehaha County. Jason Gierman, good morning.
Good morning, Jason Gierman.
Good morning. Jason Gierman, Minnehaw County Emergency Management. This is the second reading for the ambulance ordinance change. I'll just go over quickly what the changes are, and then allow for public comment. The original ordinance stated that there had to be two EMTs when providing service in an ambulance. The South Dakota law states that there's only one needed. Now, so we, we lowered that to one EMT while providing service to coincide with the state law, which also allows some flexibility for the volunteer ambulances. As you all know, the volunteers have dropped, and we're trying to keep these ambulances going and not give them any, any issues that might arise in certain situations where maybe only one EMT is on scene. It should be also noted that Sheriff's Office, most of the deputies, there's a lot of deputies that are EMTs and also provide that service, and, and it's really beneficial to the ambulances, and then they work together. The other ordinance change has to do with events in Minnehaw County where the event occurs in the jurisdiction of another ambulance. What this, the change with this, it was previously that that ambulance had to provide in writing and a request to the ambulance that's in that jurisdiction. We've changed that to just a notice. Again, that provides extra service in the areas where maybe a special event requires an ambulance service for standby. And there's been some issues before my time and then last spring that occurred that kind of made us change this ordinance. There's no other questions for me, I'll.
Any questions for Jason? Okay, so this is a public hearing, and anyone here who'd like to speak in favor of these changes may come forward and speak. Good morning.
Are you just back from invading England?
Well, actually, I'm really trying to win. I bet you have to shave before I do contest. No, start with the discussion.
If you could just, we know you, but if you could just give your name and address, that would be helpful.
I apologize, Madam Chair. Dr. Jeff Luther, the Quality Assurance Director for Minnehaw County Ambulance Association. I, I wanted to come here and just, I, I think reiterate what Jason had said. But first, I think we need to recognize the yeoman's job that he's done when he jumped in this after Lynn's departure. We're in the midst of lots of things, including this ordinance consideration, and he's done a great job, very good job. And, and somebody from the law enforcement background, he's got the organization, and he's got the, the ability, I think, to kind of keep us all together. A lot of thought had went into this process, and I, it sounds like we may be doing a step back with respect to going to the, requiring just one EMT. But I think if we look at what we have, and Jason touched on that, we have EMRs that's coming out of his, his department, emergency medical responders. It's a level of training that will assist greatly in at least first response sorts of scenarios. Also, with the sheriff's deputies, we've increased the number of those. They've been great. I've been watching those. And quite frankly, you know, the first 90 seconds of, of an incident, whether it's a medical illness, or a medical problem, or trauma, it's the basic sorts of interventions that are the most important. So I don't think this is a, a step back in quality at all. And I'd like to thank Maggie for helping us go through all of this too, and keep us parallel with whatever, you know, laws and, and ordinance, other ordinances, or, or things that are necessary to stay in bounds. But I, I think this is gonna be a great system. We're trying the best we can to make a one-size-fits-all, if you will. I think I'm also on the Visions for EMS Committee at the state level, looking for ways to improve EMS. And there is a lot of comment and a lot of attention paid to what we're doing here in the county. I think that what we've done is, is exemplary, and we're making some headway in to some of these big issues that are impacting EMS across the country, especially rural EMS, and that's access to care. Our volunteers are dwindling. But, you know, we're striving the best we can to get EMS recognized as an essential service. And, you know, hopefully, at some point in time, we'll have a mechanism, whether it's regionalization or, or what. And, but we will ultimately always depend on our first responders. Transport will, will come up next, and so we're looking at every option that we can. But I needed to come up and, and give Jason a high five on this, so that's all I have, unless there's other questions.
Any questions for Dr. Luther? Thank you. Is there anyone else here who'd like to speak in favor of this? Thank you. Good morning.
My name is Tim Haight, and I am a member of the Sioux Valley Cycle Club. Even though I'm not, I'm not representing them today, I'm just here to get some information. And I have a question on the Article 6 notice, the, the changes to that. In that, does that mean that, like, in our particular case, we're, we're free then? If that, these changes go through, we would be free to check with other? Right now, we're, we're basically tied into MedStar. And if we, we may choose them, I don't know where we're going with that or anything, but should the event come up, would we be free then to basically solicit information, or bids, or whatever, from the, the two ambulance services? And then they can actually transport as well as offer standby services? Or would they only be able to offer standby services, and then we are in MedStar's territory? They would have to be called to do transportation?
I don't know if there's, if Jason, Maggie want to try to answer that?
I believe that is correct. They would be able to work with a different provider under the new change and provide just notice to the incumbent service.
Is that correct?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Well, I, we can't give another entity any legal advice.
Right.
And so you'd have to consult with your own legal counsel. All, all the county is doing here is eliminating that need for consent of the existing service area ambulance service. And so, but aside from legal advice and giving guidance, you know, to your entity, you're certainly welcome to, you know, contact Captain Gierman, as head of emergency management, if you have any questions, but we can't give you any advice.
Yeah, I guess it wouldn't be illegal. It just, would this, would this allow paramedics plus to transport if we would choose that service? Or, or in, in MedStar's case, if, if Jay was at another event outside of his territory, he's able to, to transport at that? I mean, I guess, I don't know if that's a legal thing, but does that, is that what that changes?
Well, what it changes is the requirement that if you were, if, if an ambulance provider wanted to provide a service in another ambulance provider's designated area, they would have had to have had that provider's consent.
Correct.
And we're just eliminating that. And so we're not trying to be difficult with you. We understand that, you know, you're just trying, trying to carry your entity forward. But you are asking us to give you advice on the interpretation of the ordinance, and we just can't do that.
Okay, all right. Thank you. That's all I have.
Tim, I'm sorry, can I get your address? We need it for the record.
It, street address is?
Yes.
It's 3403 West 93rd Street, here in Sioux Falls.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else who'd like to speak in favor of the changes that are being proposed? If not, is there anyone here who'd like to speak against, or someone who's opposed to the changes that are being proposed?
Good morning. Jay Mezier, MedStar Ambulance, 25968 476th Avenue, Sioux Falls, my address. I, I can answer your question without a lot of hoopla. Absolutely, they'll be able to transport. I would never tell them they couldn't, at, at least in my territory. So if you choose them, or we don't, whatever the case may be, if they're there, they can transport. So that takes care of your, your question. So the reason the state lowered requirements at, from two EMTs to one is different than the reasons you're lowering requirements in this county. The reason the state lowered requirements, and I fought this my whole life. I've always been told that I couldn't do something because I was lowering requirements. And that was always the big fight with MedStar, is you can't do that because you're gonna lower requirements. Well, I've proven that we don't, and I've proven that we raise requirements. I am not for lessening requirements in this county to one EMT to two. We have that in your fire departments. The fire departments have rescue squads that normally have an EMT and a driver. We've already got that. What we don't have right now is an EMT and a driver in ambulances. Now, my company does a lot of work for other services in the county when they need mutual aid. And we've acquired mutual aid out of Sioux Falls on, on occasion also, so that, that does happen. The one company that's standing in front of you here, now, I'm not speaking on behalf of the county, because I don't know what my future is going to be in the county. But for Brandon, the city of Brandon, the city of Valley Springs, and those other cities that we cover that are helping fund us to cover those cities, our requirements are gonna stay two paramedics, or a paramedic EMT, or an EMT EMT at the very, very basic. Because, and I understand that Dr. Luther got up and, and talked, and I understand that you're gonna vote for this regardless of what I have to say. I get that, because that's, that's the way the game is played. But I'm telling you that the reason the county did what they did, or, or the state, is because Humboldt has a huge territory to cover. But in the state, their territory is very small compared to a lot of these small-town ambulances that have nothing. And they're lucky to have an EMT, let alone a driver. So the state changed requirements so that we didn't lose all of our services statewide. Now, back when they first put this in, in ordinance form for the state, we came to the county, all of us ambulance providers, and we said, no, we're not gonna lessen our requirements. And that's what we called it then. We called it lessening requirements. We're not gonna do that. And now, the, the services that you're subsidizing, you're gonna lessen requirements for it, and the services you're not subsidizing are gonna have to back those services up even more. And to me, that's absolutely backwards. I, again, I live in the county, but I, I'm fortunate. I, I have MedStar or Paramedic Plus that's gonna cover me. But when you're out in, if, if these services out in the county now, there's no requirements on the EMT. The EMT could be fresh out of school, they could have 20 years' experience. And when you get to a scene and you need help on that scene, and you're the first ambulance there, regardless whether it's sheriff's departments or not, you're the first ambulance there, and you're the only EMT on scene, and you need help, you have none. Your partner's not willing, not able to help you with the ordinance that you're writing right now. I am 100% against lessening requirements in this county, because we don't need to. We have services right now, and the two ma, major services can cover a lot of the county the way it is, with paramedic services. And the EMT services, or the, or the part-time EMT services, utilize the two ALS services for their ALS intercepts, which is what we do. So, once again, I'm not gonna lose any sleep over whatever you do, because frankly, in my area, in the services that I cover, these people are gonna have that quality coverage all the time. And if they can't, I will call mutual aid and get Paramedic Plus out, because that's the way it's supposed to be. I pretty much know the way the vote's gonna go, because the powers that be stood up and talked. Having said that, I live there. I live there. When we've been to situations to where, and I'm sure everybody that's in ambulance services here, we've been in situations, one EMT just ain't gonna cut it, folks. Ain't gonna cut it. No matter how we try to display this, it isn't gonna cut it in Minnehaw County. Our residents are paying for it. They deserve more than the very basic minimum requirements of the state. We deserve more than that here in Minnehaw County.
Okay, thank you.
I don't know what else to say, other than, yes, they can transport.
All right, is there anybody else who'd like to speak in opposition to these ordinance changes? Anybody who'd like to speak in rebuttal to the comments that were just made in opposition to the changes? Dr. Luther.
Dr. Luther, certainly I, I appreciate Jay's, MedStar's contribution to EMS care in this community. It's, it's very, very important, and they do a great job. I think looking at, you know, the emotions and, and what this service involves, again, across the country is facing massive hardships in order just to stay in existence in any manner, shape, or form. And with respect to those services out in the state, they do have small services, and they're on the brink. And they try and cover their own service area, but yet they're called to the interstate at certain times of the year to pick up motorcyclists and whatnot that are not in their area, and taking them out of service and creating even more of a burden. I think that looking at what we have created in this county that involves the road deputies, the EMT deputies that are out there, and we're looking at their, their scene times from time of dispatch, it's pretty impressive. And again, looking at what occurs, whether it's one EMT basic, or two EMT basics, or four paramedics, the first interventions are all, whether it's stop the bleed, spinal immobilization, extraction, scene safety, all of those are at the basic level, if you will. I don't like using the word "basic." I think what we will see eventually is first responders, that's the term. And, you know, example, in the, the city, we have pit crew CPR, whereby there's an orchestrated process when somebody has a cardiac arrest, that whether it's law enforcement shows up, ambulance, fire, or whomever, there's a sequence that each person has that's involved in that situation. We're trying to fulfill that in the county. And, you know, the answer to, will we be at risk by having just one EMT and a driver on response? I will watch that very close, but I do think that we've got enough input, and we have enough training in the community that we'll be able to provide that service uninterrupted. And again, transport is the last part of, of, of the whole sequence. We have to stabilize a patient in the field, and most of the time that we can do that, especially in trauma situations, that's a load-and-go anyways. And so I, I, I'm confident that we'll be fine, but I do respect Jay's comments, and I wanted to make sure that, that was noted.
Thank you. Thank you.
Madam Chair.
Commissioner Barth, I'm sorry, Dr.
I would just say, I think we're probably better off if you could be on every ambulance ride. You know, going a little further here, and Jay provides a good service, and his results are excellent, and I hope he keeps operating in our county. But there is a, a small ambulance that operates in Minnehaw County, the Jasper folks. They don't receive subsidy from us. They operate in Moody County, Minnehaw County, Rock and Pipestone County. So they're in four counties in two different states. And they have trouble complying with the regulations in all the different areas that they work in. And I think in talking with them, they thought this change would help them. And when we, when we first put this in for two EMTs, it was that what the state required, and I think that they changed it without passing a different law. They just changed it in their regulations. I'm not sure, but I do think that, you know, I hope Jay keeps operating, and I hope we do too.
I agree, and I, I thank you for that comment. And also, I think it's important to realize that there was a body of immense experience that has looked at this for a long time, and it wasn't anything recommended lightly. I think it was, we were considerate of everything that we possibly could be, including first and foremost, the safety of our, our responders, and to provide good quality pre-hospital care.
Thank you. Good morning.
Jason Gierman, Emergency Management. I was gonna mention what Commissioner Barth mentioned with Jasper. And I guess what we don't want to see happen in these situations is, is where that person needs to be at the hospital immediately, and there's only one EMT when the ordinance requires two, and they're unable to transport due to that. There's all kinds of variables and things that happen outside the ordinary. And I've met all these ambulance personnel since I've been doing this, and they're all very passionate. And again, we gotta think this of as a minimum requirement. We're not adjusting their standards. They can, they can adjust them as high as they want. And I, I commend Jay for keeping, keeping the paramedics that he wants to do, and I think the other ambulances will keep to their standards and continue to do the best job that they can.
Any other questions, comments? Anyone else who'd like to speak in rebuttal? All right, if not, Commissioner Karski.
Just a comment. This ordinance is, just like so many things, in conti- This ordinance is, just like so many things, in continuous motion. I mean, we're going to be looking at it again in the future. And I think back to, I believe it was Dale Froelich, you know, one day, one time told us about how he was an ambulance driver and that's when the ambulance was actually the hearse from the funeral home. And he said, there has always seemed to be some conflict of interest, you know, when you're picking somebody up. Do you take them to the funeral home or to the hospital? Which, which one is first? So the point is, these things have been evolving over time and then, you know, we're talking, you know, the 60s and 70s to where we are today. We're going to look at this again. You know, this is a minimum requirement and if anybody wants, any service wants to use two EMTs, and I'm sure many will, that they'll continue that, to that standard. So I'm in support of these changes and I'll make the motion to approve.
Second.
Any other comments, questions? All right. Roll call vote, please.
Barth?
Aye.
Benega?
Aye.
Heiburger?
Aye.
Karski?
Aye.
Bender?
Aye. Motion passes unanimously. Thank you. That takes us to item 11, which is authorize the chair to sign a 2020 lease agreement between the Minnehaha County Historical Society, the Sioux Valley Genealogical Society and Minnehaha County. Bill Hoskins, good morning.
Good morning. Bill Hoskins, Director of the Siouxland Heritage Museums. This is an annual lease agreement, actually two leases, one between the Sioux Valley Genealogical Society that has offices on the second floor of the Old Courthouse Museum and, and a separate lease agreement with the Minnehaha County Historical Society that occupies an office space on first floor of the Old Courthouse Museum. These leases are, are rent-free. They do require, because of that, that they be an annual lease and that they have unanimous consent of the county commission.
I'm sure I'd make a motion to approve both of these leases.
Second. And a second? I would just note that we, this does require unanimous vote. So are there any other comments, questions? Not all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Thank you very much. That takes us to item 12, which is consider a motion to authorize the Equalization Department to purchase two 2020 Chevy Equinox. Chris, good morning.
Good morning, Chris Lilla, Equalization. Yeah, for our 2020 budget year, you'd approved me to purchase two vehicles. A, because I was short one for staff. I had one appraiser that was begging, stealing, borrowing and lucky you didn't leave your keys in the vehicle out in the parking lot, he might have used it. So we were short and that was really a detriment to his workload and his ability to function. We had another vehicle that was getting, that we knew was on the verge and since then has actually died. It's sitting at the county shop. It has been for about a month and a half. And, and we believe that the cost to repair it, the estimates are about $3,500. I don't think the vehicle is worth that. It's a 2002 Blazer. So working with DJ and I want to give a shout out to DJ Boothie, I've never purchased through state bid prior to this, so it was a new experience for me. And with his help, it seemed pretty flawless and fast. He's the one that advised me that I, he provided me the state bid vehicle list and I've, I've looked through that and, and at the last minute, he said, if I can get another dealer in locality here to match the state bid, that I can go locally. So I reached out to Billions and they are willing to match. That also saves us $200 delivery fee for each vehicle. So I'm asking for approval, not to spend right now out of my 2020 budget, but to get them ordered. It's going to take about 70 to 98 days for them to arrive. I want to get them ordered as soon as possible. So when the weather breaks in the spring, we're off and running with all staff having vehicles to do their jobs.
Commissioner Heiburger?
Make a motion to approve, but also thank you for a good job. And you did come under the bid of what we, the allowance money that we gave you and good job and thank you to DJ for the help.
Yes.
And that was a motion to.
So I have a motion in a second. Any other comments or questions? Roll call vote, please.
Benega?
Aye.
Heiburger?
Aye.
Karski?
Aye.
Barth?
Aye.
Bender?
Aye. Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. All right. That takes us to item 13, which is liaison reports. Are there any liaison reports this morning? Commissioner Benega?
I don't have a liaison report, but evidently I had way too much sugar over Thanksgiving because when I wrote my notes about the treasurer and the auditor, I switched the titles, but it kept the comments on the wrong side. So I owe the Mr. Lit an apology because when I said zero for his issues, which are not all his issues, I was actually talking about someone else. So I apologize for that because I'm evidently still on that sugar high.
Would accuse you of being sweet.
Okay. Are there any?
I would agree.
Commissioner Heiburger?
Mine is a liaison report, not an apology. We have the SDACC, the South Dakota Association of County Commissions Board meeting is this next week and so I will be traveling Wednesday to peer for a Wednesday and Thursday meeting. And that's just an FYI.
Thank you. Anything else? Okay. So that takes us to item 14, new business. Is there any new business today? Commissioner Benega?
I'm just going to introduce Monty again. We have some, I think, very exciting news about GovTech and with his efforts and other staff members, we have an alternative way to pay some taxes.
Yes. Good morning, Commissioners. Monty Wattenbach, Minnehaha County IT Department. Just wanted to report that yesterday, the county went live with the newer property tax payment website. Just a reminder of a couple of advantages of that. One feature that is new with this site is that taxpayers will be able to pay current year delinquent taxes. So up to this point with the previous website, someone would have to either call the treasurer's office, figure out what that amount is, pay by, by mail or physically come down here. Now they'll be able to pay those delinquent taxes right through the website. Additionally, as we move forward, larger property tax owners will be able to pay more than just one parcel at a time. So if you're a business or just a property owner with, with multiple parcels, you can search for your, your name or your business name, find all of your parcels, review them and check out with, with one process. So much more user-friendly in that regard. Let's see. Additionally, the processing of those payments is handled by, by that vendor, by GovTech. As compared to with the setup to this point, that information was, was downloaded to us, processed by our bank, and then we had to deal with, you know, any sort of incorrect routing number or non-sufficient funds or what have you. So it'll just be a more streamlined and efficient process, both for the taxpayer and for county staff.
Any comments, questions? Commissioner Heiburger?
I'd just like to say thank you to the IT Department. This was brought forward by IT and, you know, concerns by the commission that according to the treasurer's office, nothing has changed in 50 years in her office. And so I appreciate the fact that your office has worked hard to try to bring us back up to the 21st century. And this is a great product for taxpayers.
Thank you.
Commissioner Benega?
I guess the only other thing that I would suggest is finding a way to provide public information about this without going through the treasurer's office. And we can do something that hits all the taxpayers that will be paying taxes in a different manner.
Yes. So we were kind of ready to go with this here about a month or so ago, but trying to change the website during the middle of tax season in October really wasn't something that everybody was comfortable with. So we kind of waited. So unfortunately, we, we kind of missed that, that October property tax season. Fortunately, we're really early for the next time. So I think that the commission office has, has some plans to do some outreach and some PR to let the public know and to let those larger property taxpayers know and banks and whatnot that, that this is available for them and will be a great tool for them and easier for them to, to do business with us online as compared to having to, you know, mail, mail that in, or mail in their taxes or physically come down here or whatever they were doing before. So I think that there is some intentions on doing that sometime before, you know, next, next spring's tax payments.
Awesome. I think having everybody involved, IT and equalization and everyone else, that that's going to be a very productive thing for all of us.
Again.
Once again, we just really appreciate all the work that you guys do. So thank you very much. Thanks for coming and giving us an update.
Thank you.
All right. Is there any other new business? Any old business?
Madam Chair.
Commissioner Barth?
I would just comment, I'm not my normal exuberant self today. I think it's been a tough time for us in this county for the last couple of weeks. And I would first like to thank the state's attorney's office, the employees there from slogging forward during what has got to be stressful for them as well. And I, I think this will pass and we'll all be better off for it. And I thank Dr. Luther and Gerald for helping bring me out of my shell.
Okay. Thank you. Auditor list, did you have something you wanted to say?
Do you want to go to new business or?
Well, we've kind of, we're at new and old business. So come forward if you have something you want to talk about.
If you've got business, come forward.
Bob Letz from the auditor's office, I wanted this body to know that January 3rd, that a delegation from South Dakota, including auditors from key counties, myself included and the Secretary of State will be traveling down to Omaha to go to ESNS. They have, have offered to help us out in the ballot, the post-election ballot auditing process that I've been a fan of for quite a while. Secretary of State Steve Barnett has been very much in favor of this idea too. So we're in the exploratory part of this here. It's, it's a complicated process because we have to figure out audits, you know, post-election audits that work for the small counties, the medium counties and the big counties. But like I say, it's, it's a process, I think, at the end of it is going to be good for elections integrity. What a post-election audit does is test the machines and make sure that the machines are reporting accurately. And it's, it's a mathematically complex business. I wouldn't stand here and tell you that I know all about it today, but it's something that's coming forward. And I think we will be able to get a process that is, is quick and clean. You'll be able to do it after the election and we'll still be able to do it without moving the canvas statewide. So I wanted this body to know that.
Thank you. All right. I'm going to officially say we're done with new business. Is there any old business? All right. Hearing none. I entertain a motion to recess the Minnehaha County Commission meeting.
That's my motion.
Motion? In a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. We'll reconvene in executive session about 10:15. Thank you.